Okay, I'd like to call the August regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to order. Before we get started, if you look at your agenda, I want to mention that there was an item from last month's agenda regarding cargo elevators that was not inadvertently left off of our agenda. After discussion, this board requested more information before acting. We asked Tim to bring us back a PowerPoint presentation and a lot more information before we felt we could responsibly act. Tim and I met last week, maybe end of the week before, and he had not had a chance to put that information together, so we decided that we would roll that forward to next month when we are not working on land use plans. So, we're gonna roll that forward. I'm sure that everybody probably went ahead and drove around the island and looked at the cargo elevators, right?
Yeah.
I don't think one all the way up here.
So, if you already did that, great. If not, I'm sure you'll make the opportunity to drive by and look at those as they come up through decks and on the fronts of houses and in rightaways and all that in the next month or day. So, if not, you've got a month to get it done. Okay, moving on then to your roll call. Chair Vicki Myers here, Vice Chair Mark.
Here.
Secretary Tracey Thomas.
Here.
Bob Hunter.
Here.
Greg Shue.
Here.
Alternates, Woody Tyner.
Here.
Pete Palace.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. It would have been Pete's turn to vote, but everybody's here. Approval of minutes from the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting. Are there any changes, additions, corrections?
Move to approve and submit.
Okay, I had one small change, and it was on the last page. It was, instead of open training with Noel Fox, it was open meetings law training. That was all. Under comments, Chairman Myers stated that the August 10th is the open meetings law training instead of open training. That's very minor.
So, I have a question. On the part that says the land use update, it says, anyone who lives in the town that may be a stakeholder. And then further down, it says they all need to be citizens or property owners. What does that imply, citizens or property owners? Do they have to be a property owner of Fulton Beach to be on the board?
I think the way the ordinance reads now is that you only have to be, you have to be a property owner, you don't have to, you don't have to be a full-time residence.
Right.
This has changed, I think that's the way it reads.
Okay, but citizens is what...
We actually get asked somebody when I got here, yeah.
Because a citizen could be anybody who lives anywhere, right?
What we were trying to do is to clarify that we wanted people that actually lived on the island.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Good to be a renter, though, right?
Yeah, that's right. That would be a citizen.
Okay.
Okay, so I entertain a motion. Do I approve the minutes as amended?
Subdued.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. Were there any opposed? I didn't hear anyone. Okay, motion carried unanimously. Okay, public comments on agenda items. Public, are there any comments on our agenda? Ray and Beth?
No.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Land Use Plan Steering Committee member appointment. At the last VOC meeting, Tim had an agenda item which he asked for permission for the, asked the VOC for permission to make the Planning and Zoning Board the Steering Committee and extend our term for our committee for greater than ninety days, which is currently our limit for creating committees, and to allow us the power to appoint members to serve on committees, correct?
That's right, up to three.
Up to three.
Yeah, up to three, yeah.
So, we needed to do that, and at this time, we've had three people who have applied to serve on the Land Use Plan Steering Committee, and that was Ann Arnold, Dwight Willis, and Catherine Gaines, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, at this time, I would need a motion to appoint these three members who have applied to serve, to serve on our steering committee.
Subdued.
Okay, is there any discussion? Are there any further nominees?
So, I just have one comment because I was looking back on what they did before, and they did have a member of the, you know...
They had two commissioners actually.
Exactly.
It was a wholly different constructed committee.
Yeah.
I presume that that authorization down extended the authorization for this to function as requested, so...
It was designed to approve the planning board as the steering committee with three extra members, and that's, it basically broke the mold, is what we did with that. And it was a consensus that we do it that way.
Okay.
Just as, I think we've got a good cross-section of representation outside of the person individuals that have applied.
Just as long as, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that we considered the fact that last time they had somebody from the board on.
But I presume by the commissioners authorizing, they've allowed us to proceed as we've submitted, and they're still the final authority and...
And Tim, you speak for the board, huh? Right, I act as the intermediary between this board and our consultant, and I also act as intermediary between this board, well, the steering committee and the board committee.
And so then we will prepare this document, and then we will ship it to the board for them to then do what they would like with it.
We've got a motion on the table that I hope they've noted on...
No, right, this is still discussion.
Oh, we're discussing, okay.
So, is there any more discussion?
May I be so bold as to ask a little background about the three applicants?
Absolutely. Would you guys like to introduce yourselves?
Start with Dwight.
Okay.
I'm Dwight Willis. I live full-time at 140 Carolina Avenue, and we have been on the island now for fifteen years. I'm a retired teacher and principal, and I'm very active in a lot of different things. I'm kind of a passionate environmentalist, protecting our ocean and our beach, and also very interested in issues of aging. I work, I'm a volunteer with the North Carolina ARP, and so we do a lot of things with meeting the needs of aging populations, and so I hope that I can offer some suggestions if part of this committee offer that kind of expertise.
Yes, it's me. I'm Kathy Gaines. I am from Fayetteville, North Carolina, and we bought a house here four years ago and moved last October, just in time for the winter. I was a real estate appraiser in Fayetteville for thirty years, so I saw that Laura had volunteered to be on this committee, and they wanted people with real estate experience, so I thought it might be time to meet somebody that lives here. We live at 1252 Ocean Boulevard West, full-time. Thank you.
You know, I'm Ann Arnold, and I've been here in the real estate business and other things since nineteen eighty-seven. I bought my first property here in sixty-nine, so I've watched the town evolve to where it is today, and it's beautiful presence, and I just love being here. So, whatever I can do on this board to make it stay the way it is or grow better, if that's possible, that's what I would like to do.
Anybody have any questions for them? Okay, any more discussion? Hey, would you like to vote on that then? Vote on these three members, adding them to the steering committee? Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to these three members? Would you like to do it individually? You can do that.
I can.
Okay, so that's unanimous then?
Yep.
I had a couple of things I wanted to address real quick before we get started here. Each of us are now members of this steering committee, and we're responsible for developing a document that will be used to guide our town's near-term planning, growth, and what we'd like our town to look like in ten years. We're charged with developing a document with as much community input as possible to send to the VOC for adoption. Be aware that land use plans are advisory, but that they must be referenced in all of our decisions, and it's not to be taken lightly. I view it not as a document we need to have on the shelf, but as an opportunity to set a course. And you guys know me and how enthusiastic I am about land use planning, so that's all I'm gonna say, and I will cut it off right there. But we are a town community, a town committee, therefore, we are governed by the state's open meeting laws. And I just had my double dose of open meeting law training, so we're just gonna really quickly say, long story short, for group emails, and this is mainly for the, you three, anybody else who didn't catch that training, don't hit, respond to all, reply to all to emails. Same goes for a group text. Keep what constitutes a forum in mind. We can talk individually about this, but we can't talk as a group about this plan. Our town attorney Noel is a big fan of phone calls, you know, instead of group emails. We can't have group online discussions about this. If you're into group, group online chats, we can't do that, all right? This is a really controversial topic, and so I don't think this is gonna be a problem, but I just want to throw it out there. If you have any questions about open meeting laws, I know that Tim or Rhonda could address your questions. If I can, I can find an answer for you. And with all that said, I'd like to introduce Wes McLeod, who is a senior regional planner with Cape Fear Council of Governments.
Before we add that, can we just have, because we still have the Planning and Zoning Committee here, and I think we talked about using the preset meeting times as a convenient means to do this committee.
Yes.
But in the event that there will be an independent, and so we will convene, I guess as two different committees, if necessary, and I presume there will be some months that will be not be a Planning and Zoning meeting as the months pass when there's no additional needs. To the extent that there will be need to be one, are we going to conduct it, which meeting will come in one order, just so we can solve this now? I think it would probably be best to do this meeting, this steering committee first, and to the extent that it carries over, we would conduct our business.
I agree with you. I think that would be more efficient for Wes and for our other members to do that, to do the land use planning first and let them go, and then we can carry on P and Z afterwards.
Okay.
Now, we, you probably saw in your packet, we do have the schedule for the land use plan, and we talked about doing it every other month for land use planning, but then, you know, we would still have our monthly P and Z meeting.
The other point I was gonna make is that, based on the size of this document, some of the topics discussed, I think we need to seriously consider amending the start time for this meeting if it's accessible for others to start earlier. A, overtime for town employees and others, and this could literally run into the dinner hour, I think, on some days. And I think maybe in advance, we could consider, sorry, we could market for candidates, I know we'd have to amend. Well, I guess this meeting, we could start this meeting before the Planning and Zoning list of time anyway, but I, I think that we should consider an early, if it's a compromise to approve.
I'm completely open to that. My back's been sat, I was sitting by the elevator at seven-thirty this morning because I was so excited we were gonna go in.
Anybody, I don't know, Tim, you would probably prefer to start.
Anytime during the day is fine with me. I, starting late's not good with me, but, yeah, I think that we would probably be better to start it, if you're gonna start early. I just said, he said it's fine with him.
Yeah, I mean, we can do two, then that way, if we go more than two hours, which I don't want, usually more than...
Sure. Yeah. We're worried about a six o'clock.
No, yeah, I mean, typically, we wanna try to keep these meetings two hours. You start getting into two and a half and three, you start becoming unproductive, but, you know, I think two would work, and if we go a little bit beyond into the five, I don't foresee that happening.
Well, I think the current concern then is if we have planning and zoning business to carry on after that, then we would be getting late with these guys, and so, should we do it in for two?
I mean, we can do one as well.
I, you know, I'm fine with anything before four.
I'm gonna start at two.
Two?
Yeah.
Can you guys check with Heather and make sure we can have a room at two?
Yeah, we'll have a room at two.
Okay.
Yeah, we brought it up. Yeah, we should have it. Yeah. Plus, there's only thirteen of us. We've got the upstairs conference room, and we have that room out there as well. There's a conference room right there.
The public participation, though, becomes a little bit...
Well, but they can, they can still sit around the room. If we've got more than that, we can find someplace for them to go.
Okay.
But I don't think meeting is gonna be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Especially this time of year.
How long do you anticipate this to last, for us to redo this whole thing?
We have a, we have a schedule. It goes on for a year and a half, maybe, two years?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully...
That was in my packet. All right, thank you.
Hopefully, a little more than a year with you guys.
Yeah.
You didn't get them all? I didn't get them.
I did. It looks like she showed them the last time.
We'll get you mine, no problem. We gave you theirs.
This is ours.
I'm sorry, I didn't have, I was still able to support it. I apologize. That was important to you.
You ready? All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Chairperson, for having me here today. My name's Wes McLeod with Cape Fear Council of Governments. I have been doing this for a little over a decade now and have worked on Brunswick County, Brunswick County beaches, land use plants for every single beach town except for Caswell Beach, so I'm pretty, pretty familiar with what's going on with a lot of the beach towns, and they are all different. So, you know, I'm not coming here to say that we're gonna create a plan that's the same as Ocean Isle Beach or Oak Island or what have you, but they all have their unique characteristics. So, I'll be leading you through this process. It is luckily not too controversial. There'll be some things that folks will be disagreeable about, but that's fine. We'll figure out how to come to consensus on them. But by and large, it's gonna be, we're gonna develop material for you, bring it to you to read over in-between meetings. We'll come back and talk about it and figure out if you have questions, things, additional suggestions, or items that we need to correct, and we'll do that for about the next year or so, before it gets out of your hands and then gets into the commissioner's hands. So, that's a very quick, brief, little snippet of what we're gonna be here to, here to do. I'm gonna talk a little bit in more detail here in some slides that I have. Does anyone have any questions in particular for me? Some of them will probably be answered about the land use plan, but if you have questions about my background or experience, please feel free. All right? So, all right, this thing, we're gonna talk a little bit about a land use plan, Coastal Area Management Act, the timeline, which I think most of you have that draft schedule there. One of the, we're gonna talk about your current vision statement that was included in your 2009 plan. One of the action items that we need to do today is make sure we're comfortable with the contents of that community survey, because the sooner we can get that up, the better. Ideally, we need to get that up in the next week or two. The longer that survey can run, the more responses that we'll receive, the better off this document will be. So, that's one thing that we're gonna need to work through today, and I hope everyone has received that and had at least a chance to read through it. Okay, all right, great. And then, we're gonna talk about some of your demographic statistics, just highlights from some material that you're gonna be given today. I've got another box of binders for you that has chapter one and two in it that will be delivered to you. We will bring hard copies for you and for you to read so that, one, we don't have concerns about open meeting law, distributing digital material, and, two, so that you guys are the first folks that vet any material before it's placed on the town's website or is available to the public. That's generally the best way to handle it, and it's also easier, I find easier, for folks to review hard copy materials and digital materials. Okay? And then we'll just close with questions. And as I go through this, you know, this is an informal setting, so please just interject if you have questions. So, what is a land use plan? I think a lot of you maybe have gotten this big document here, and you're wondering what in the world is this thing. Ms. Myers gave a pretty good, pretty good description of the land use plan. It is essentially your official document for goals, policies, and analysis that relate to land use and development in the town. It's sort of like a blueprint for growth, if you would. They are different across every jurisdiction. Some communities are losing population, so they're trying to figure out how to deal with economics and other things related to that. Other folks are having tremendous growth, and so the plans are tailored to how you handle all of these growth pressures and the negative impacts that come with it. And then other communities are beach communities, and they're entirely different animal altogether in what's important to folks. And I already heard Ms. Arnold say, which is inevitably a theme in most beach communities, they like it and they don't necessarily want it to change, and that's completely acceptable. So, you know, some of that will obviously be addressed in the land use plan. It does offer formal guidance to the decision-making officials. When there is, for example, a, an amendment to your ordinance, your zoning ordinance, or an amendment to the map in and of itself, you have to go to that land use plan. Tim will prepare a consistency statement for you all, and you guys have to vote on that consistency statement. Now, that is law, and, but that is the only way, land use plans are not in fact required for any other communities except for our Kama counties. So, it is not established by the legislature that you have to have a land use plan except in the twenty Kama counties, but they still say that if you're gonna amend your ordinance, you have to comment as to the consistency with your comprehensive plan. So, it's sort of a backhanded way of saying, well, I guess if you're gonna do zoning, you need a, you need a land use plan.
So, any ordinance you change has, you have to have a consistency statement?
Only related to development.
Okay.
Land, land use.
Only, yeah, yes, sir. So, and it also offers...
I don't know what she's pointing at.
An open forum for the public and town officials to propose and implement new goals and policies.
Is there a issue?
No, I'm just thinking, so are parking, we really kind of... Sorry.
And every community does it differently with consistency statements. They are required by law. There's plenty of folks that don't, aren't aware of NCGS 168 383, which spells out consistency statement requirements. Is someone going to come in here and, you know, arrest someone because a consistency statement was done, not done? No. But if it's a controversial item, and someone is displeased with outcome of an ordinance change, then they can file a lawsuit and have that ordinance changed and validated if that consistency statement was not done, so...
We went through the whole consistency thing.
Consistency statements only have to be written off, one, or section 157. Parking was in article nine, it was regulatory, written out by law.
So, they're unfun, in my opinion. I think it should be reached up to the local community where they wanna do it, because for some text amendments, it's a little bit silly trying to come up with a consistency statement that, you know, when you're changing a procedural item, for example, how can, you're not talking about procedures in your land use plan, but we're still required by law to do them. All right, that's enough about that topic. And I'm open to discussing it anytime when you, should you wish to.
The important thing, though, is that the legislature is continually tightening down and pointing to the importance of a land use plan.
That's it, that's it.
That's the key point to me.
That's right. They, yes, they are, particularly for your zoning map, and their most recent change, depending on how you look at it, could see that they are giving less credence to the land use plan or more, because they allow now, they say that if you make a provision, if you adopt a provision that's inconsistent with your land use plan, your land use plan is automatically amended, period. So, you could view that as the legislature saying, we don't care what the land use plans are, let the, let the local government do what they want and just amend the plan, or you can say, you know, that they really want you to actually be consistent. I don't, I don't know. I think it was due to some communities in the triad were requiring a separate action of folks to amend their land use plan before they could adopt that one. We're going down a rabbit hole here, but there's supposed reasons for the, for the consistency statements nonetheless. The third thing about the land use plan is it is really important to gather your public input. This is where, if we find out things that are really important that need to change in the town from a regulatory development aspect, those can then be transferred into amending your zoning ordinance. So, you need to do the public input part of your land use plan, and then you get into the nuts and bolts of fixing your zoning ordinance following that. But this is really the avenue at which to gather that public engagement. There may not be anything that comes out that says, well, we need to change zoning ordinance to reflect X, Y, Z, but this is where we do it, if there is going to be something that comes out by the public. Okay. Some of the things will be addressed in the land use plan, and you, you've all received the old one. There will be a lot of the similar material. The outline will be a little bit different. We're gonna try to reduce some of the texts where we can. I'll add that the, the rules, the Kama planning rules have also been amended as of 2014. They are much, the folks with Division of Coastal Management are much more flexible as to what communities want to include in their land use plans. It was trying, I will say, in years past in developing the plans. They had a very strict and rigorous set of guidelines that you had to abide by, whether or not they made any sense to do for the community. So, now they have said, so long as you address our Kama management topics in some form or fashion, you do some basic mapping and analysis, we're pretty much sufficient with you to develop a plan that meets your needs. So, but these are the things that will be in your plan, community concerns and aspirations. This is a result of your public input. Analysis and maps on the existing conditions, your existing land uses, environmental quality of the area, all of your natural systems, water quality, things of that nature. Natural hazard threats, flooding, hurricanes will be addressed. Adequacy of infrastructure. Infrastructure is very important, in particular for beach towns. Some folks have septic, others have sewer, you guys have sewer, so, you know, we'll look at, we'll look at those items as well. To conclude the plan, there'll be a set of goals and policies that relate to those Kama management topics, as well as any other local areas of concern that are identified, whether it be aging, for example, or recreation, or transportation. Those will be separate items outside of those Kama management topics.
Are those necessarily tied to the community concerns and aspirations?
They will be, yes. But now the five Kama management topics, they are always important. They relate to public input that's developed because they have to do with water quality, land use compatibility, natural hazards, you know, that, and, and infrastructure. So, they're inherently related to public input, but if there's something that is not, for example, aging or recreation, those are not expressly Kama management topics. So, public access is another. So, we'll just see as we go through it, and you guys will get a good sense of, once we get the survey up and running, you know, I'll give you updates, you know, as, and we'll, we'll start to see what's kind of rising to the top as what's important to folks. And the future land use map is the land use plan equivalent of the zoning map. That will be the map that sort of shows the ideal land use pattern moving forward for the town over the next thirty years. Now, Vicki, you mentioned ten years. This planning horizon will actually be thirty years. Division of Coastal Management wants us to look out to thirty years, and we do population projections out thirty years. The state demographer only does them to twenty years, so anything above twenty, you sort of gotta, you know, take with a little bit of a grain of salt, in my opinion. We do linear projections out from the states. We're not professional demographers, and I think if you get much beyond twenty, you don't know when has a crystal ball, so, but we still have to do the thirty years.
So, so you do it for thirty years, and then when do you revise it? Every five years or every ten years?
It depends on the community. It's totally up to the community, but ideally, every five to seven years, you know.
So, if we get it wrong for the thirty years, we're okay, because we're gonna look at it again.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, there, again, for the beach towns, a lot of the facts and figures that are available don't necessarily jive with what goes on on the island. Census does permanent population, so does the State Office and Budget of Management. They do permanent population, which is not reflective of what goes on. So, you'll see, we're gonna talk a little bit about it today. We've developed methods for... We've developed methods for, um, gauging, in fact, how many folks are on the island, how many folks are, you know, putting pressure on the town's services and so forth. And so those are the things that we've developed over time. They're, they're actually important to you guys, not that there's six hundred and thirty-three people here living year round. That's still important, but it's not really an indication of what's going on. And then lastly, there's a mandated chapter by, uh, Division of Coastal Management on Tools for Managing Development. All this is, is just a reflection of, you know, what ordinances you have, um, staff, and then it will compile all, any action items into, into a matrix. All right? So I think folks are probably general, generally aware of the Coastal Area Management Act. This is, um, the state's, um, state's law for, uh, regulating, uh, particular areas along the coast in our twenty coastal counties. Um, the state recognized in nineteen seventy-eight that, you know, coastal lands were, were pretty valuable, um, for aesthetic values, recreational values, and particularly for tourism values as well. So it's probably important to have some additional regulations over those lands. Um, those lands in particular are called areas of environmental concern. Those are your ocean hazard areas, your coastal wetlands, marshes, uh, inlet hazard areas, a number of particular items. When there's a development proposal in those areas of environmental concern, and we will go over those, and we'll be, they'll be mapped, and we'll have a lot of discussion about them, there are separate permits that are required that are issued through the state. Now, do you guys have a Kama local?
Twenty years.
Okay, so. She can, yeah. So do you, you, um, flag the vegetation?
Yes.
That is a hard worker there, twenty years. Um, what I was mentioning there about flag, flagging vegetation, so when you build an oceanfront house, someone has to mark that first stable line of natural vegetation, or the town now has a static veget- vegetation.
And just a portion.
Just a portion, okay.
But right now, our stable vegetation is more strict, so we have to use that.
So, and then from that point, and it's always different. You have to, you can't just say it's, it's there on the GIS. You have to go crawl over the dunes and flag it.
And flag it.
Yep. And then from that point, then your ocean hazard area, it establishes where that setback is gonna be for the front of that structure, depending on the size, so. Same thing, uh, also for areas on your estuarine, um, uh, bodies of water. There's a seventy-five foot setback, um, that establishes that AEC, and then thirty feet of setback from that actual marked vegetation, normal high water. Um, so there's a host of things that go on. It's great that you're able to do that. Some, some communities ha- do not have a Kama officer on their staff, and so, uh, Rhonda probably saves the citizens a lot of time and, and franklin money by not having to go through a, a state officer, so. There, uh, they do have a planning program. They do offer grants from time to time to help with these long-range plans. And then the last thing is, when there is a Kama major permit, um, that is pulled, this is where you would be doing, uh, installing bulkheads, really big projects that would require, um, some sort of oversight from Army Corps of Engineer. What are your primary Kama major permits here?
Um, bulkheads, um, large dock, docked facilities, long way.
Yeah, we got waterway structures, yeah, yeah, and dredge.
So.
Subdivisions in the past.
In, okay.
But we still have to maintain those records and abide by those restrictions for those subdivisions.
Yes, absolutely. So, so the land use plan comes into play for the Kama major permits. Uh, there's a consistency review that occurs. Now, is, does the town do the consistency review, or does the state do the?
State.
The state does, okay.
Women's and all this stuff.
Okay, and so if there's a Kama major permit that comes in, and it is completely inconsistent with what's contained in that land use plan, the state can deny that Kama major permit. Okay.
They, they, they request that information to, yeah, they look for it.
Yep. Um, the state now has, has modified that they will allow the, the community to do the consistency review themselves if they wanted to, um, but a lot of folks just defer, defer to the state to do it. Um, it has put, stopped the projects in the past, particularly, um, ones having to deal with, that exceeded the height limit that was established in the land use plan, for example. Um, if you're familiar with Ocheneau Beach, there's, the reason why the, the hotel there is only one half of it is there is because they realized that the other, after the first half was built, that the other half was actually not consistent with their land use plan, so they couldn't proceed. So that's an example there. But by and large, the land use plan is a guidance document. It is a wish list, a blueprint, we really wanna be this, you know, it'd be great if we can accomplish all these things, but in reality, we're probably not going to accomplish all them, but it's where we want to move forward. It is, there is no financial, uh, sort of constraint to it. That's, this is what we wanna do, and then, you know, the policymakers will have to figure out how to happen, make it happen over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's, you know, you can look at big picture items, uh, just really anything that is important to you. All right? Timeline and public involvement. Uh, here we are on August twenty-eighth. It's our first, um, meeting. Um, you will be given chapter one and two, and you've been given the survey already. I'll give you chapter one and two at the end of this. Uh, we were, we're proposing to meet every other month. Now, this is a generalized timeline. There may be months that we, folks have conflicts, so they can't make it. Um, we don't have a meeting in November or December, um.
I have a question. We have January twenty-ninth. That does not line up with our, um, planning zoning meetings.
For the fourth.
Yeah, and that's the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay, that may have been my mistake. So it should be the twenty-second, thank you. And I think your December meeting was gonna fall right on Christmas, and so do you typically cancel that, probably?
Yeah, we, we, we skip that one.
It's hard at, at that time, and so I.
I'm pretty dedicated, but not that dedicated.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's not a lot that goes on in those couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll be honest, we don't have a whole lot of planning, sorry.
That's okay.
We just don't have a whole lot.
Well, it's a good thing, as Ms. Arnold says, if you don't want a whole lot of things to change. But, uh, in any case, yeah, we'll skip December and, and jump back in, and we'll probably actually have back-to-back meetings, January and February, um, to get us back on track. We'll try to shoot for having our first public input meeting. This will be sort of a, um, a somewhat facilitated meeting in February. Um, continuing, continue drafting the plan. Um, by this time next year, you guys should have, uh, received the full draft of the plan and be pretty close to moving forward with recommending it to the board commissioners. Um, but, you know, we'll take as long as we need to. I've got in there, you know, some, some additional review time for you, um, but ideally getting that into the commissioners' hands by, uh, November or December of twenty twenty at the very latest. Uh, once it gets out of the planning board, there's a mandatory, um, state review. They take the document and they have a minimum seventy-five day period. All they do is review it to make sure that it has met all of their guidelines. Uh, I've never had a plan that hasn't come back that didn't meet the guidelines. Just, they send it out to their agencies, uh, other agencies, and they see comments back, and they'll tell us ultimately, all right, we're good to go, and then the commissioners can proceed with adoption. All right? Uh, commissioners will, are required to have a public hearing. Once that happens, it will be sent to the Division of Coastal Management rep for certification. At that point in time, you'll, it'll become your official coastal resources, um, plan, and then it will be used for consistency reviews. So it's a fairly long process, um, but it's just sort of how it goes. Takes a long time to develop this material, and you can't do it in a month and actually have something that's meaningful.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Does our plan of, of meeting plan, uh, do those chapters relate to these sections in this in some way, or what is?
Not necessarily. Those, there will be material that is in those, but the outline, and I don't have it for you, but you can get a gist of it here. We'll only have six chapters. I find that the fewer chapters you have, the better off you are. Um, there is some ancillary material in the old plan that relates to some of the old Kama requirements that frankly are not necessarily.
So our, our old plan had ten chapters?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there, there, there's, there's actually, there's actually, actually been some changes in the, there were a lot of requirements in the way you used to have to do the plans, and there were specific requirements and, and a specific outline that you had to follow to get there. Well, that's changed, and, and it is a little bit more condensed, and that's why there's gonna be a difference in the chapters.
Do we start with our vision?
We will.
And I've got your vision statement we're gonna talk about right now. I just wanna show it to everybody and generally get a sense of what you think about it, but we will come back and address that once we're, we're done with the public input process. So chapter one you'll be given today, and there will be a to-be completed. Your old vision statement will still be in there, and we'll change it if we need to as we come back. But, uh, but yes, that's a, we, you know, I would guess that the current vision statement is pretty close to what ultimately it will be, but we'll, we'll go through the public engagement process first. But yes, we'll have six chapters, an introduction, the community profile chapter is number two, that's your demographics. Number three is the natural systems analysis. This is all the maps showing the flood hazard areas, your AECs, um, things of that nature. Chapter four is community facilities. That's where we'll discuss water, sewer, recreation facilities, transportation facilities, anything having to do with, um, biking or walking will be included in that chapter.
You said that would be the public input point?
Public input will be somewhere after you all are given the natural systems, uh, analysis, when we have our public meeting. The vast majority, or at least my hope, is the vast majority of our individual responses will come from this online survey. Um, you know, great if six hundred people show up for a public input meeting, but I don't think it's gonna happen, so.
Not in February.
Yeah, not in February, and even, and I've held these things in the middle of summer. Folks, folks are on vacation. There is a, you know, land use plan, uh, public input meeting is not high on their list to do, I can assure you. Uh, that's not to discredit anything we're doing, but it's, you know, hard to get folks to come out for these things.
It's a lot in February. We might be looking for something to do on the COVID.
That, that's right, and so, you know, it's typically the, um, the residents, the full, the year-round residents, the folks are gonna come out anyways, even if we get have it in the summer, so. Um, but we will, we will make sure that folks are fully aware of the opportunity, should they want to come down, um, for, for our, uh, you know, second homeowners. Any case, and then chapter five addresses your land use and growth management. That's really where we get into a lot of the topics that are particularly important and particularly relevant. Um, that's where we talk about existing land uses. That's where we talk about the future land use map. Uh, we talk about, you know, uh, build-out analysis, how many lots are there still? What is the potential for future growth? All of that will be addressed in that chapter, and then that's really where you have all of your policies related to land use and development are contained in that chapter. You, there will be policies for chapter three, and chapter four, and chapter five, and they'll be given as those, uh, chapters are developed.
So can I just check for understanding? There's two, currently ten chapters, so you're gonna actually create a draft of the new stuff for us to, based on what was in here, and then we're gonna discuss whether or not it meets what we currently think is going forward. You're gonna create a draft of each of those, and that's what we're gonna get to review?
Yep. There will be some of the stuff from your old plan, particularly, you know, I'll be sure to, you know, I've already read through a host of your policies. Any policy that seems like it is still relevant is coming right over, but, um, but most of the narrative will be completely new, unless there's things that are relevant. Um, and, and I know exactly where everything in here goes, transfers into the other one. Uh, we can have a ten-chapter plan, it just, it's, I've found that folks much prefer to, to keep them shorter and concise to what degree we can. Um, it, it is much more approachable for folks. We, and, and, and really, a lot of these were ten, eleven, twelve chapters, because of the Kama seven B rules were so extensive, and they are not anymore. And, and I've had a lot of di- dialogue with the Division of Coastal Management folks. They, they are, uh, particularly favorable about this shorter, um, way of handling it, if you would. We'll still address everything we need to. All right.
How do communities, in all your experience, deal with legitimate conflict? Where you've got half the, half the population is, is pushing for an area, I mean, there's literally a point. How does that get incorporated yours? It just gets represented as a, and let the political system resolve it down, down the road. How does you, how do you?
If there are, if there is a sticking point or a couple of pain points, for example, if it comes down to a policy, just, let me just throw one out. Say there, folks wanted to, uh, you guys allow, um, we're working on Project Tapsil Beach right now. This is in their zoning orders. Some folks want to restrict duplexes in certain districts, other folks wanna leave it that way. That's a very easy change one way or another for me, but ultimately, we cannot come to a consensus in the planning board, so elected officials, they're gonna have to make that decision. That's what they got elected to do. I am not the one to weigh in on that, and both sides can, can, um, provide their input. But most of the time, I think we're gonna be able to come to consensus on various items. But if there are little pieces, little sticking points like that, then they're gonna be presented to the commissioners. We did not come to consensus on this, this is what we have. You're gonna need to make a decision.
So is that how the process works? We have to come to con- consensus? Everyone has to agree to something that's put into there?
You know, everyone doesn't have to agree, but the majority agrees that a.
Well, that's what I'm questioning, is it majority or is it consensus?
It will be majority, but we will try to come to a consensus, if that makes sense. But if there is an absolute, you know, hot-button issue that we're completely split, that we're not gonna make any headway on, we're not gonna let it, we're not gonna sit here for three months discussing it. Ultimately, it's gonna be pushed, you know, it will be one of these things in here that needs to be, uh, decided by the elected officials.
We'll, we'll, we'll take it to the commissioners.
Yeah.
But when do we decide when we're gonna take it to the commissioners? Because you just said that we're gonna do a majority and put it in there, so when do we decide when it goes to the?
If there's a majority, then it'll be addressed, you know, we'll keep the policy. The majority says we wanna keep this policy.
Well, you'll always get a majority.
Not necessarily. There will be, there can be certain things that are important enough that it will need to go in there with a caveat, that the commissioners need to be certain as to this item.
And you always gotta remember that the final document also has to be approved by them, so.
That's right.
It is not finalized here.
That's right.
We are sending them a document to be approved. So i- if we all do come to a consensus, or come, we have the, the majority agrees to something, and it is a sticking point beyond us.
Yep.
They will take care of it there, just like they would take care of our sticking point that can't get beyond us. So you, you're not gonna hold up the plan, you know what I mean, to, to, to try to maneuver around that. It's just not gonna happen, we'll be here forever.
Yeah.
And there're gonna be some of those, too.
Yeah, that's why I think we should figure out what the process is for when we elevate it. That's what I'm trying to get to. When we don't, when we don't put something in the thing and say the majority said we wanted to do this, when some people may be, you may have two or three that are really against it, but the majority ruled, put it in there, bring it up to them, they don't know that two or three were against it.
There, when, when this is, uh, ultimately recommended for approval by you all, there will be a memo that I will prepare to go alongside with it. And if there are some of those items that are really hot-button issues, they will be bulleted out.
Okay.
Policy six point one.
Okay.
There is still some discussion about this. Four members of the board felt very strongly this.
That's good.
And that, that's basically essentially what I have. Yeah, um, but the land use plan is not, hopefully not, we're, we're, we're not, this is not an inherently controversial document. Did you, did I? Okay.
Yes.
Um, but, yeah, we, we will, we'll come to those, and we'll deal with them when we get to them. Okay, uh, any questions about the timeline before we move, move on from that? All right?
Hey, Wes, let me ask you a question. Have you found any value in other plans you've worked on, going back to the, what's in the previous plan?
Okay.
Saying, okay, here are all the hundred goals we set up, and we accomplished seventy-five of them, and the other twenty-five, should we include them all? Were they stupid or?
There, I will take every one of your goals and policies, any of them that are relevant, still relevant, will be included in your plan. If there is something that we come across, um, that doesn't make any sense for, to be in there, there may be action items related to, to infrastructure that are no longer relevant. The town now has an agreement, for example, of Brunswick County Utilities. to infrastructure that are no longer relevant, the town now has an agreement, for example, in terms of county utilities. I guarantee there are policies, and I, in fact, I'm pretty sure that I read that there are policies about, um, you know, capacity and so forth, which is not necessarily a concern anymore. So, things like that, there, no sense of putting them in there. But a lot of those, uh, policies related to land use, um, had been in fact, probably in your plan for much longer than the two thousand nine plan. It'd probably go back multiple years, uh, you know, possibly into the eighties, and so they just get carried forward.
That's, some of those, that's not gonna happen this time, you're gonna clean it up.
Well, if it's still an important policy, then it will, and you guys will get, get it as draft, and if you feel like this policy doesn't-
Needs to go?
Needs to go.
Okay.
Or it needs to be modified, and take it out, and that's where we, we will spend really a lot of our time, most of our time is going through those policies, um, but there will be some, you know, wordsmithing things in the narrative, or things that we need to add to the narrative, or, or things that are, I have missed, that are wrong that we need to change in the narrative, but a lot of it will be, um, discussing those policies and the merits of it.
Now, would you say, I'll just make sure I'm following, you say policies, you mean recommended actions or?
There are, there, we will develop, your plan will be structured, there will be a goal related to the KAMA management topic or your local area concern, and an objective, a policy, and then underneath those policies, if there're specific policies and the town needs to take some sort of action to help better achieve, you will have a recommended action. And, and so those recommended actions are not typically used for consistency review though, those are action items, consider doing this. Or, uh, the town may want to pursue grant funds to do X, Y, Z. Uh, the town may want to modify this particular provision in the ordinance to meet this policy that we've established. Those are, those will be those recommended items, and that'll be, then that'll be charged with, uh, Ron, Din, Tim, and you all to figure out how to implement over time. You know, what I typically recommend is after this process is done and I'm gone and you guys have had a, enough of a break from the land use plan, you pull it back out in a couple months, take all of your recommended actions and prioritize them. These are really the things we feel like were important for our board to accomplish over the next year, maybe we'll start trying to work on them.
Yeah, a good example would be more emergency accesses, our plan, we may have a new policy where we need, we say that we need to invest in more of those. If you just kind of line, we'll take it to the board and say, you know, we need to move forward with this and make it happen, that's an example. It's also an example of a policy that may need ma- remain to stay, may say that already.
That's right.
Yeah.
Alright, um, your vision statement. I'll read it, I, most, most of you can read as well. Holden Beach should utilize available resources to maximize its full potential within local, state, and federal guidelines, and strive to be an inclusive wholesome family community that continuously focuses its present and long-range planning, economic, and developmental efforts to protect and sustain its recreational beach, its residential character and natural resources, and the supporting services of the town, public and private, for the next generation of town property owners and residents. Now that will be in your chapter one, um, we haven't done our public engagement process yet. Uh, I don't know how many years this particular vision plan, vision statement goes back, but it could be in, in earlier nineties iterations of the, of the plan as well, and I can see if I can pull those, but, you know, I, I am not intimately familiar with Holden Beach yet, but I would suspect that that generally captures to some degree, uh, the vision for which the town wants to, wants to see happen. It is long. Bit of a, bit of a novel, um, so. What's, you guys will have a chance to review it in chapter one, and we can talk a little bit about it more in October. Before we get into the review process, uh, next month, or in October, my hope is I'll be able to give you an update on the community survey.
So wait.
Yeah. So, that brings us to really what, where we need to, um, make, make some progress here today is in, in this community survey. This is a similar survey that I've used for, um, Oak Island, Ocean Isle Beach, Sunset Beach, similar iteration of this survey. Um, that's not to say that we don't need to tweak it, um, but it has been used before, and it's somewhat tested in, in its effectiveness. That being said, um, do you guys have any particular questions about the survey? And certainly, um, concerns or suggestions for updating it?
I have a lot, and I can see, um, um, it's going to be mailed, uh-
Yes.
You're gonna mail it.
There, does, the town still bills for water, correct?
Yes.
So, what I typically, we do is we get a little half-page sheet that will have essentially this narrative that's on the very front, and then it'll also have the link, and folks can go directly to the website. Um, we nailed out hard copies before, we get a better response when folks can just go online. Folks do not want to deal with having to fill it out and mail it, um, so-
You're gonna do both?
Well, the, the, we can mail hard copies, but I'm not recommending that, there will be, this would be the link.
Yeah, so generally, that's right, that's what you would normally think, but this is an older population, and so they tend to do better, we found from the property owner survey that we tried to do, they tend to do better with hard copies, some of them. So I think we need to do both, we need to have both, is that agree with you, normally you would think that? Most people wanna go online, but we do have a, I think, a pretty large population that is just-
Oh, wow, for sure.
Yeah, they're not even online.
This can be printed on both sides and then we'll get a couple pages and stuff into the mail.
Yeah, so, there, there can be some that we can mail, it is exceedingly expensive because you need to, we'll have to just talk with the town about it, but you also have to provide postage, so, um, yes.
Could we not just put a statement in that if you would like a hard copy, call me?
Sure, that could also be that way.
We could end up with twenty-one hundred phone calls.
Yeah, so-
My question, they had to keep them from double doing.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
It's not that it could be for someone to drop them off in a box in the town hall.
And we can al-
Why would have to require-
We would also have hard-
A lot of them don't live here.
Yeah, that, that's where the, the majority of this process is.
There's actually six hundred and thirty-three, or six hundred and thirty-some of you that live here.
Giving somebody a fifty cent stamp and only ten percent of the people need it, I don't know what imposing fifty cents on somebody would-
I don't think you need to give them a stamp, I think if you just give them the survey, they'll put the stamp on it, if they care enough to send it back, they'll put the stamp on it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, in Sunset Beach, which is generally older than, than, uh, you guys, and Ocean Isle, which are your same median age, they both did, we didn't do, we didn't send-
What kind of return did you get on that?
We had about, uh, seven or eight hundred in both, uh, responses, so.
I don't know how many.
Well, that, that, that eclipses their permanent population, but if we get anywhere from, you know, if we get six hundred responses to this, I, I will be, I will be pleased. Now, that's not to say we can't get more, but, um, you know, there's, without us, you know, attaching gold bullion to these things, getting, getting a heavy response rate is, is nearly impossible.
Okay.
Okay, alright, when's your next POA meeting?
This weekend.
Yeah.
If you have this ready by this weekend, you get a big response, you can hand it out. There's, how many show up for that, there's a lot of people show up for that thing.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, the last time we had about, I think the last time I would have about twenty-five property owners.
Oh, no, I think there's even more than that, but-
I know, there's been a couple times, there's been a lot more than that.
But you have a web presence, what has happened in a lot of these communities now is they have Facebook groups, and one person puts a thing on their Facebook group, and then there is overnight two hundred responses.
Yeah, so that's my concern, we have to be really careful because those are not property owners.
Well, there-
On our friends of Holden Beach, or even our Holden Beach-
There is a, you know, again, this is to some degree an imperfect science, uh-
That's not that question.
Yes.
But how are you gonna filter those out, manually?
We can, I, yes, the way this, this is compiled is that I can go through and give you responses from property owners, second property owners, year-round residents, I've done that, um, in several communities, both in Ocean Isle and Sunset Beach recently. Um, you'll find that there's not a significant deviation, I don't believe, from some of the results, but we will filter those out to you all's hearts content, um, and that-
What, what system are you using this with, are you using like Survey Monkey or?
Survey Monkey, yeah. We've got the paid version, so there's a whole bunch of things we can do to filter the results.
So can you make that question mandatory?
It is mandatory.
Okay, good.
Is there any, I mean, I know some households are not in consensus among-
Sure, that's right.
And therefore maybe could wanna submit two of these, and that would be, you're not gonna say only one for households?
Well, it depends on the community. I, and I don't wanna go down this path here, but, but I have found that if you can get folks to at least fill this out, that's fine. I have not found that a lot of folks are gonna fill it out twice to help try to, you know, change policy. So, you can limit it to one per, per IP address. I don't typically recommend that precisely because of that response, because the husband and wife or family members may also wanna take the survey, uh, but if you, just throw that out there, um. So yes.
You, you won't get a bunch of false negatives because even when I was at Chap- Chapel Hill, it's been pretty much proven that people don't go on just to take surveys to change outcomes, they're just not that energetic, they just don't do it.
Well, I, I think if we make sure that everybody is aware that the survey is available, people who really wanna do it will find a way to do it if they do it on, I prefer online.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if you, if it said, oh, this is not available online, I can, where can I get a copy of it? I'm gonna go, get me a copy of it, I'm gonna return it to where you tell me to return it. If you really, you know, value this process, you're gonna, gonna follow whatever the process is.
And, and we can notify the public, there's an easy way for us to notify the public that there's an online survey. And tell them, we can put it in everybody's water bill, and everyone will know, and then we can tell them how important it is in their water bill, and then we'll target that group so that they will know to go do, to go do it if they're interested in doing it.
Good, I, I'm glad that you're good at putting it in the water bill, I think that's the right target of the population that should be taking the survey.
So we are not going to send it out in a town blast, and we're not gonna put it on our town website then?
Uh, I think so.
I think so.
No, see, that's the concern, then you get non-property owners.
But that's fine, you know, I think, you know, that's okay.
And it's where they live.
There's a thing here where they'll sign, I'm a seasonal visitor, or another sign, there's a, a thing that, I mean, now they might lie, but-
My, my thought is, no, a number, okay, no, a number eight then, I think that we need to have a, we need to have another number eight that says, I'm a nearby resident who visits frequently, or, um, I think we need another, another, I think I know what you're asking.
Seasonal visitor?
What does, what does business owner writer mean?
If you're a business owner, but you don't actually own the land on which you operate your business in the town.
Oh, 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 that's like, so the stores and the gear and all that, oh.
It's like a Pete lived in mold.
But, and, and so let me just, let me just add this, and, and, in, in the, um, in these surveys that we've done-
Yes.
Over ninety-five percent of the response rate has come from property owners, whether it is year-round owners or second homeowners. It is, and I think it's important for the towns to actually get responses from seasonal visitors, I really do.
I totally agree with you.
But, but, but what I'm saying is that it's hard for them, they don't necessarily care. So, so they typically don't, don't take the survey, that may be different here, but I, I just tell you-
So we're not concerned with the tourists, we're okay with that. I'm concerned with the people that live on the other side of the bridge that are now gonna have input into what we're gonna have to pay for.
Because it says year-round, they think they live on Holden Beach.
Exactly.
They have Holden Beach address.
And they don't get a water bill from Holden Beach, only the people that actually pay the taxes get the water bill, that's why I'm okay with the water bill.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned about getting a lot of input from-
Anything that's online is accessible, but you're right, I mean-
But they don't know about it if you don't put it on the Holden Beach website or the-
I wanna, yeah, and I wanna share a, just an anecdote, that a friend of mine shared with me, that they were, they met someone who, who, there's the doctor's office, who said they lived in, on Holden Beach, they lived on the waterway, and they were talking, and they said, where, and they discussed it, and, well, they live by provisions.
Right.
And they said, well, you know, you don't live on Holden Beach, and they kind of had a little argument about it, and they said, yes, I did, and no, I don't, and you live by provisions, well, then you're on the mainland, and they said, well, that is on Holden Beach, and I was like, well, no, it's not. And they continued to have an argument about it, and technically it's not.
That's correct, they're not on the mainland.
And all the others don't have that problem, because their mainland is still, you know.
No, 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 they, they do not have any residents that are on the mainland, now they have an ETJ, which is different, but they, so, we don't have-
No, we don't, we do not have ETJs.
I don't think so. ETJ, we used to.
We do not have an ETJ.
Ex-territorial jurisdiction.
Where did it go in?
I don't know that we've ever had it.
We never had one, we tried to get one.
I wish we did.
Yeah, I do too, I wish we could talk about it.
That's not on my list to talk about.
But you don't have one in this plan for sure.
Well, you really can't.
No, we, we've never, the town-
Well, you can ask the, the commissioners, um, and I bet that they would cede some control, so they, so they don't have to deal with it, but that's a whole nother topic.
My point is though, is that I think even if you ask people where they live, where, do you pay taxes here, all that kinda stuff?
Yep.
I think there's a large group of people who think they live in Holden Beach, and it's, I'm not trying to fault them, I'm not trying to judge them, there's some beautiful homes that are on the other side of the bridge, I'm not, that is not my point at all. I'm just saying that, that there's some confusion here, and, um-
There may be.
I don't wanna skew our data, I'm really into data, I have more statistics than I ever wanna ever.
But is there, is there an opportunity for enough to really skew the data?
I'm concerned that there is. We've all had the same conversation with many people that think they live in, at Holden Beach, that live over in Oyster Harbor, for example. I have friends that live over there and they, they think they live at Holden Beach.
But if you look at the number of people who are gonna fill out this or who really care about it, is there enough of those people who live off the island that's really gonna skew the results?
I'm concerned that there is, anecdotally.
Well, I think that if we had something, a survey to identify those people, that would be important because I personally would be interested in what those people in which are on the plane, and what the people on the other side that live, that way, what she's thinking, and what they want, I think that's just as important as-
I can tell you, I can-
Can we do another category here that helps them identify, and I don't think the county could ship them that information?
The, um-
We can just have them put their address on here, we sort it out like rails.
Yeah, something, I don't know, but can we give them another category, they're not seasonal.
So this is the beginning of the survey, if you went out, you see this, it doesn't ask you for any demographics of, of where you live, or what your email is, or, you know, that, if this is how it starts?
We can put the demographics up front, the survey is not-
Name or anything like that?
I mean, we can, again, this is supposed to be an anonymous, anonymous survey. I, I dealt, we dealt with the exact same thing, you know, in, in Ocean Isle Beach, there was concerns that, that the data was gonna be skewed. You know, it was not the case, um, but-
I just wanna bring it up.
I think the first question said, do you live on the island of Holden Beach, or do you live-
It was around the coast, the surrounding community.
Or do you pay, or do you pay taxes to the town of Holden Beach, or do you not pay taxes?
Well, see, I, I think people, they don't know.
They don't know. They just pay taxes, they don't know what to-
I, there may be a, there may be a handful of folks that are unaware of the difference, or if you ask them, they say they live in Holden Beach, but they may actually understand that they are in the unincorporated portion of the county. There is a reason why folks live outside of the corporate limits specifically, that reason specifically is so they don't have to pay taxes. And so, you know, if someone is trying to be malicious and they, they want to skew the results of the survey, maybe so, but there's not-
It's gonna take a lot of people.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Are you a registered voter in succession too? There are only, only town voters-
The point is, if you only put it in the water bill, then only those people are getting the information. Now, they can still find out about it, but if you make it more public to everyone, then, then you are gonna be potentially tainting the data.
That's fine, I mean, if the town wants to proceed with only the water bill, that's-
Which is what you originally said, right, you were gonna send it out to the water bill.
I think it should go out to all avenues because you should be trying to receive as much input as possible.
Yeah, I think we ought to send it out to all the members of HPPLA.
I have no problem with that because those are property owners on Holden Beach.
Yep.
I mean, that's another avenue, you do the water bill and you do the whole deal that we have.
And remember, you guys are the steering committee for this, so if the survey results do not jive with, and your, your representatives of the town have a result- if those survey results are not consistent with your understanding of what's going on and important to the town, then we don't need to take them, um, we, we, we will only take them with a grain of salt here, you know. These are not gonna translate, if someone, you know, puts in a comment here, there's not gonna be a policy, for example. This is supposed to be just a general gauge, we're trying to figure out what's important to folks, and maybe some things are important overall, overall, um, from a public standpoint.
The, the, the only problem I have by trying to, 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 to hold your survey, I know it's important to get the mass part of your information from the island, but you also gotta remember that those folks that are over there as well, they, they have part of our, they drive part of our economic engine. And they are also part of Holden Beach, they may not live here, but they're part of it. And, um, you know, I, I don't know that you necessarily wanna stifle any information that they would send our way, you might wanna sift through it, but I don't know that you want to stop.
I think the key is with Wes, that he can divvy this information out by full-time residents, property owners, and other, other residents of someplace else. I mean, if we get that kind of information divided, we're gonna see what our residents, our full-time residents have to say about it. And if that's different from what our property owners who are not full-time residents say, and then what our occasional visitors or whoever, tourists or whoever they are.
Um, and, and what, we could add.
We're gonna reach consensus on this, Tracy.
We, we can add another bullet.
This thing is just like, you gotta have a lot of people to have skewed data weight.
Well, we only have six hundred of our, of our, there's not that many people that would skew the data, we're only six hundred.
If you come, if you come to the wrong kind of consensus, it's gonna have to go before the board, because I'm not prepared to generate any more funds out of my budget to pay for it than I've already got there, so.
Yes.
Wait, I wanna hear what Kathy has to say.
For, for eight, that's what we were gonna, that's what I was gonna do. So we can add, for, for eight, we have seasonal visitor, and for, we can add another one that says off-island resident of Brunswick County.
There you go.
There you go.
That's perfect.
Brunswick County neighbor.
Yeah. It needs to be off-island.
Yeah, off-island resident of Brunswick County.
So Wes, let me ask you a question. I'm a second homeowner, I've been here for twenty-two years, how do I answer number nine?
Are, do you live here full-time?
No.
Then you, what statement, um.
I'd pick second homeowner.
Yep, that would be.
I know, but, well, how do I answer number nine?
Well, you can write whatever you want in there, write whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, lots of people will say, they, they, well, they will say that I'm a second homeowner, I've had, or we've had a fa- a house in our family for X number of generations.
So maybe we can change that though, to say, how long have you owned property instead of lived, because a lot of people, right?
That might be.
Own properties.
Yeah, that's what I was given now.
If you own property in Holden Beach, for how many years have you?
Lived there.
Owned it.
Owned it. Yeah.
You could distinguish the other categorization by the question.
Is it animal's name isn't for sale?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and there is a lo- there's a question logic for this one, so, for example, and I believe that it was already tied to a year-round resident, um, that would trigger you to answer number nine if you said year-round resident. But I, we'll change it to property owner, and then there'll be question logic that only if you're a property owner, you answer this question.
Did, did you hear the other change in ones?
Yes, if you, if you own property in Holden Beach.
No, Ann said she wanted you to put there, Ann is it perceived.
I have a question for you on number seven, on the community center programming and community center expansion.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a community center. On number seven is.
Good question.
For fourth block.
Yes, let's take that one out.
Well, in a sense, we can do it.
I, I think we do have, we do have community center programming.
Uh.
We got tie-dye, we've got yoga classes.
We have programming, but we don't really have a community center, so if you wanna call it like recreational programming.
That's what this is.
Call it recreational, it's at the town hall.
But we use it as a community center, and we also use that over there. We've used that, and we've used the, we've actually used the pavilion more than anything.
Okay, we call it recreational program, but when I read that, I was like, community center, where's our community center?
Where's that again? This is on the front door.
The pavilion.
It is, always forty-nine or ten.
It's at the hall on the front door.
Right, and it says public service.
We can, we, we can add additional recreational programming, um, unless that's already added.
Because the idea is we wanna get, we don't want people confused, we want them, that's what you're asking, right?
Yep.
Do you want more pub, we want publicity, do you have more stuff?
Additional recreational programming, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if we get any more, we're gonna need a community center.
Where are you gonna build it?
Huh?
Where are you gonna build it?
Yeah, let, let, let's, let's just go through, uh, let's just go through and start on number one. Um, any questions about number one on the first page?
So I have a question about how you, how you put in the, how do you choose the answers? It seems to me like it was always skewed, all the questions are skewed to the first one as the most likely to be checked versus randomly, alphabetically, or something like that. As I went through all these questions, it seemed like the first two or three are the top ones as would initially be perceived.
We can do that.
Is that the intent, or is it, is it supposed to be like a more random?
It, it's typically, this is gonna be the first response, I mean, and it doesn't matter where you, where you put it, it's gonna be the, it's gonna be, yeah, but.
But I think, I think some, some things might be more important that are down, like I think.
See your housing.
But do they even get there? No, I don't, I actually, I thought, I even were on the top, but that's why I was seeing how it was.
We can do alphabetical order, would that make, would that be better?
I mean, I would look at every, everything.
See, that's, that's how they put it.
Right, and I would think that the most prevalent answer would be the top one, because when you're writing the survey, you know, that's what you're gonna say first.
But, but that's, that's skewing people, that's, you're messing with their head, 'cause the first one they see is the most likely they're gonna check. It's not a, if you're doing a survey, it needs to be, um, random.
Yeah, well, I, I'd hate to tell you, I don't think you can come up with an algorithm that's gonna fit everybody's idea of which way this is gonna work.
I think if you're gonna take a survey and not read all the responses, then you really don't need to be taking surveys.
Well, I think you need to put the answers in some, not.
We can do al- we can do it, we can do it alphabetical.
Like alphabetically or, or completely random, or not what you think, the, for, for who's creating the survey, don't put the answers that you think in.
You're always gonna put other last though, right?
Huh?
Yeah, others can be last.
Yeah, other can be last, others can be that.
We'll do alphabetical for this one. Um, same with number two. And three.
All right, fill this out, I'll leave it myself.
So the only thing common they have for number three is the sidewalk, then multi-use paths, could you put in parentheses, i.e. bike paths?
I think that's a different one.
Well, it's not in here with your mo- development, it's not in here on this one. Is that what that's supposed to mean, multi-use paths? 'Cause pre- later on, you put something in parentheses, and you also talk about the bike paths in number five, and then you do put in parentheses about kayak, boat docking facilities, water-based recreation on number seven. So I, I, is that what that's supposed to imply, or is there something?
Number, number three is supposed to basically imply bicycle and pedestrian facilities overarching, um, but we can add bicycle paths as well.
Well, 'cause if that's the intent, the word bicycle is not written anywhere on number three.
Yeah, it said number five.
So.
Uh, we can put, we can put sidewalks, sidewalks, greenways, uh, yeah, sidewalks and, or bicycle and pedestrian facilities can simply be added, how about that?
Sure. Adding it in number three?
At number three, where sidewalks is, will be bicycle and pedestrian facilities.
You gotta park.
No, I wanna hear the word bicycle.
You gotta bike path, right, Ocean Boulevard, that's all the place they run.
You can't stop.
Right in the middle of the river. I know. If I could stop there.
No, I don't want them to, I don't want them, I want to have a bike path.
Yes.
So we're gonna alphabetize, we're gonna alphabetize.
They're legally allowed to be allowed.
No, no, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that right now, 'cause that's one of the choices they have, and I'm saying.
Most time, it's illegal.
If it's like a utopia, there would actually be a bicycle path. In addition to the road and the sidewalk. Yeah, that too, right?
And a golf.
Okay, thank you.
But the other, other place you could, you could put a bicycle path on the left-hand side of Ocean Boulevard.
All right, I don't wanna process it, I just wanna make sure that we have bicycle on that question.
But you can't mandate a choose, can you? They have a property.
No, you cannot.
That's right, that's right. You're right.
I missed a question, but anyways, the, so, any question, anything else on number two or three? Okay. Number four. Number five.
On number five, could we add something about public transportation?
Sure. Lack of, uh, lack of public transportation?
You want your little shuttle.
Well, I mean, shuttle, you know, something, but lots of communities around the country are doing things to assist seniors in transportation issues. And since we've been on the island for fifteen years, two of my neighbors have had to leave the island.
Right.
They came here to die, they had to leave the island because they lost their driver's license, and had to leave the island because they had no transportation. They didn't wanna call somebody every day to take them, get a cup of coffee and take them to the grocery store or this kind of things, and they would like to stay here.
Stephen, we've had, some voters got off of Thanksgiving Day and were doing the turkey walk, and said, well, we're gonna go, we're just gonna call Uber to come, pick us up and take us somewhere, and sort of chump us, good luck.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't even have access to that.
So what, 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 what do you envision, what, what do you envision that to look like?
I would envision, I would envision that to look like some kind of little tram that would run year-round in the summer during tourist season. It would take our visitors up and down the island, and over the food line, and all the stores and restaurants over in that general area. And then maybe off-season, a couple of days a week, that'll take people around, up and down the island.
Certain hours.
And in certain hours during the day, but, and, and I even see it as a public-private partnership where some of the businesses might help support, um, health finance centers, all kinds of transportation grants, federal and state transportation grants. Frank Iler is on this, is the chairman of the state transportation committee, I talked to him about this, he said there's grant money available for those kinds of things that these dollars that state's using. Um, I just see that that would be very helpful, and then people who really needed to have transportation and who didn't feel comfortable driving, or some people who have visited some of our adult beverage facilities, who made it a ride around to, to the western part of the island, and, you know, didn't wanna drive or whatever. Or, or kids who wanted to go over and play putt-putt, who were twelve or fourteen, and parents didn't have to go with them, but didn't have to drive all the way over. But just a regular, it, it would be very helpful for a lot of people, and would especially enhance seniors who, uh, who need that additional support.
Yeah, let, we will add that, um, lack of public transportation, um, now Kathy, you mentioned ADA accessibility for number five, do you want to add that as a?
I was just thinking, I, I, to my knowledge, we don't have any, any access.
Ah.
Do we have?
Do we have that?
Do we have?
ADA?
Yeah, we do, we have, we have at least, we have, we have, we have ADA, uh, compliant, uh, accesses at more than one spot, but we have one that is dedicated completely to ADA. The whole, the whole thing, yeah.
Um.
Do we advertise that? 'Cause I should, I haven't seen.
If, if you go to the, if you go to the camera website, it's av- it's actually listed on cam-.
And the town.
And the town, we have a map now that shows that stuff, but it, we have it too, yeah.
Um, anything else on number five? Number six.
Is that where recycling, solid waste and, and recycling, is that a major issue, important issue to the town's environment? To me, that's the worst thing we're not doing, is not recycling.
That needs to be on there.
Yes, we can add that.
Recycling needs to be on the survey.
Um.
Yeah.
Solid, solid waste management and recycling, or just recycling?
Just recycling, either one.
Just recycling.
I think we're okay with that.
Recycling.
Okay, recycling.
Yeah.
Solid waste is gonna take care of recycling as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Landscaping, shouldn't that, number six is one of those, some kind of erosion control of trees or anything, something like that, to protect the land from washaway or whatever.
There is a beach erosion item there, um. Now, are you talking about like coastal wetlands or marsh?
No, I'm talking about.
Dunes.
Throughout the island.
Um, stormwater management would sort of, but we could add a protective vegetative material.
Um, I don't, I'm just throwing that there for special, I don't think that it necessarily has to be.
You mean, you're talking about something like a veget- a vegetative buffer?
Island would be a lot more stable and a lot more valuable if there were a lot more trees on the island.
Mm-hmm.
Personally, I, I have been here for very long, I'm a little history island.
Trees have hard time on this island.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are some big trees on the island.
There's some vegetative buffers. We've got some, we've got some X zones that grow trees, but most of our B zones and A zones don't, that, that don't, soil just won't.
The salt is, so.
Yeah.
Kind of similar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My trees are brown on one side, really don't get it.
But like palm trees or any other kind of thing, something that's gonna keep the ground there, you know what I'm saying? In a, in a flood event, it's gonna keep the ground there, whether it's, some kind of root.
That's what I said, a ve- a vegetative buffer.
Whether it's grass or.
Grass or black myrtles or something like that.
Right.
And also soaks it so much more water, stormwater, than like just.
Than sand.
Yeah. Tree that.
They forget so many of them.
Nothing.
It would be doing crazy.
Where would you, you'd do.
Well, we, we could, we could put enhancing, um.
Nothing drank more than some.
Analysis of what's.
And it does, does enhancing landscape and vegetative material?
Sure.
Isn't that covering so much?
It's for erosion is your, is your issue, right? So can we just put beach slash island erosion?
Beach erosion is there.
I know, but can we just put like, 'cause it's, you're not talking just the beach, you're talking about in, in inland, and then.
Scouring along the redways and stuff.
So just say beach slash island erosion, and that would cover it.
Well, we were supposed to have some trees planted along the, the estuary there in Botland, but they never were planted.
Oh, the park was?
Yeah, there's a, and two talks about it.
You don't remember the, you don't remember why they were not planted?
He's talking more about.
Practical, pragmatic value.
Y'all remember why they weren't planted? 'Cause people said that they would obscure the view of the marsh.
Weren't they palm trees?
They were palm trees.
And they grew.
They said that they would look odd because there were no other palm trees. I can go back and read minutes, but I remember like it yesterday.
I'm sure. All right.
And that's part of what we're discussing.
Let's move on.
All right, so beach slash island erosion.
Is that okay if we add that beach slash island erosion?
I think that's better, than just beach.
Okay. And recycling will be added as well. Um, number seven, we're gonna modify to state additional recreational pro- programming. Anything else on number seven? Now, this may be the, if you want to add ADA accessibility, this would probably be the location for it.
No, I mean, I think you could have it.
Okay, okay.
But I just didn't know we did it.
Well, I did have a question about, um, that, I had a list of things that people had approached me about that I've been collecting for some time now. Um, and one of them was, um, whenever we do do our accesses, and I know we can't do all of our public beach accesses with ramps, but people had suggested any that we could do to try and make them ramps for the, for, besides people with handicap, you know, trying to use them, but also strollers and wagons. So, um, is this where we would put that?
Um, yes, what, what, what would we, um.
Have some more beach access.
Easily accessible.
Creative.
Um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think how we, how it would be worded, um.
You probably wanna put something like that actually in your camera land use plan.
But here, we're trying to figure out if people care. I mean, that's what.
Sure.
'Cause they really care about that.
ADA accessible slash easy, easy, easily acc- accessible, public access locations. Does that work?
Yep.
And that's what we refer to as age-friendly, not just, you know, for young children and for older people as well, and so it's age-friendly across the entire. And so it's age friendly across the entire generational group.
So ADA accessible slash age friendly, public access locations.
Older, seniors, whatever.
Is it kind of intuitive to talk about shaded areas for recreation? Especially during the high season, it's like blazing hot, maybe something degrees, nobody really wants to be outside.
You could, you could say establishing more, um, establishing shaded recreational areas? If that was important to the group.
That shelter right there, and this wonderful thing on the island, there's always a breeze right there, you have the splash pad. It's the best thing you've done.
Part of it is covered by those little sails and everything else.
Sail covers are wonderful.
Splash.
I designed it out of crystal.
So those, those things are made as significant contribution.
Absolutely.
I wonder if the sail things could work along the, the exercise area down through there.
Is it worth putting on a survey? Shaded recreational. That's right, that's right.
Establishing more shaded recreational opportunities, does that work?
I don't know how, whether it's covered by a question here, but one thing that I've always, and I've heard about it, I think it's even referenced in here, is we have all this marsh area and there were plans, I thought, to build an educated, actually you could make a multi-use, it could be our bike path, it could be.
They're doing that at Boiling Springs Lakes, the county just got a greenway, do you know that town?
Yeah.
Was it actually funded?
We had it funded.
I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and what?
We have grants.
I don't know if they're gonna, I think they have.
We wrote a letter supporting the greenway grant, but they're trying to do that at V S.
But they wouldn't be now.
Yeah, well, I mean, the public interest, I know.
May have done it.
But the wetlands, a number of communities are trying to do, to get people, to get to the wetlands and see that the beauty of the marshes and the beauty of the wetlands and.
Animals and all the bird, wildlife.
More importantly, you could discern a number of issues.
There is, there is an, an, an item here that says, we, which we can possibly expand on, get more specific. The item says create more public access location for water-based recreation, but you could add, um, additional boardwalks for, for, for water-based areas or.
Yeah, you be careful though, cause those are kind of different, you don't wanna, you won't really just know what they actually wanted.
But we can, we can add one for boardwalks slash walkways.
They just refer to wetlands instead of the beach, when everything, when I think of boardwalk, I think of, you know, Jersey.
Yeah, you have to be careful, people will say.
Walk, walk, walkways, uh, along and through marsh areas.
Yeah, wetlands or marsh areas.
Wetlands like marsh.
All these years of trying to keep people out of the marsh, I don't, I don't.
We're trying to fit places where people would sell friends.
That's what I said earlier.
Were they like, was yesterday?
If we're adding stuff, can we either add select as many as three or can we ask to pay rankings for us, with one being the most?
Yeah, I like the idea of ranking, I like ranking better than just pick three.
It was a pain in the neck, but boy, it really told you.
That's, that's the only part is that. It takes people a lot longer to rank them, uh, but we can, you know.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
I have experience counting.
Eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, I have to rank. Check boxes.
I mean, I just think if we start adding four.
Then maybe we can have, maybe we can let them pick four instead of three, if you have so many.
I'd rather do something, I have to have to rank all five, all eight of these here, man, I mean, that just drives me crazy. And I'm sure I'm not the minority.
So maybe pick four?
Okay with that, but not rank.
Up to four, they, they can only have, you can only pick one.
Yeah, up to four.
Or you can pick zero.
I'm gonna have it all the stuff, I'm happy with it.
Well, let's, let's go back.
Survey that only answers one question is still about the survey, I assume, they don't have to necessarily check all the boxes, I think.
Well, they have to check number eight or it doesn't go through, it's mandatory.
Let, let's go back though.
You're kicking them out.
This question has gotten a little bit out of control in the number of responses here, I think that we have.
When are we at?
We're number seven, we have.
Well, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Keep this in mind, one question, it's three, five, and seven, you got something about bars?
Yeah.
Yep.
This, this one is specific, but, um, the three bikes tend to be important in, in beach communities, but, um.
Are we duplicating, are we asking this, are we looking for the same answer more?
Well, number three is an overarching, what is the most important type of issue? And if bicycle and pedestrian facilities comes out as one of those, then we, yeah. Number five relates to transportation facilities in general, so whether it be parking or bicycle facilities may come out. Number seven, we're talking more about your greenways as an actual recreation facility, that's, that's, yeah.
So on number seven, back to Vicki's point, I think that we talked about the fourth box, but doesn't the third box really cover what we have? Expanding park activities and programs?
That's what I was gonna say, we don't.
So did you scratch out the fourth box?
But let's get rid of the additional recreational programming that we're doing.
Cause it's covered with our park activities, right? And there, we got rid of one, now we can add one.
Well, we've added, we've added.
Would you consider a bridge a park activity?
Well, in programs.
Yes, that is.
Well, I would prefer.
Expanding park activities in recreational programs or community programs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Recreational programs or community programs, which ones?
Recreational.
Okay.
Three, five, and seven, I agree with your rationale, I just wanted to see if there was a rationale.
There, yes, I know, there actually is. How about, do we need developing new locations for outdoor events?
Where?
That's on number seven.
I mean, not a where, where you're gonna, where we're gonna develop.
Well, yeah.
That's the point, if you think you need them, then we would try to figure out where to put them, but do we need them, it's the, I mean.
We have expanding park activities and recreational programs, so it may be that that one can be dropped, there's some similarities.
And locations is the key word.
Yes.
Subsequent to the last plan, I mean, there has been some fairly significant developments there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So.
So leave it.
Wait, do we think we need that one, more locations?
I do, if you, if you, if you're thinking about expanding programs, where?
What about establishing more outdoor indoor seasonal events?
I think that's a valid.
Okay.
Someone to respond to you.
I think everybody's missing the beach.
All right, so the ones that we've added, the three that we've added here are ADA accessible slash age friendly public access locations, constructing elevated walkways and wetlands, and establishing more shaded recreational opportunities. Okay. And I guess the question comes, uh, we, do we want to rank them or just leave them at three?
Well, can we let them have four since we added so many?
We can add four, yeah, do you want, is that a healthy compromise? Up to four?
On each of them or just that?
On that one.
Or just that one?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Tim. Tim, if we wanted to encourage builders to, um, offer more age-friendly things in their construction or new construction on the island, would that go into any of these areas or is that something we look after building case?
You could put it, you could, you could, you could put a, well, you could, you could probably put it in here, but if you actually, if everyone actually wanted to do that in the Cama plan, you'd actually put it in the Cama plan and put it under the educational process, and then we would, it would, it would engage us to have to encour, put it into our educational program we have here. Everybody knows we have contractors information on the menu, where we put all the contractors in this room at least once a year and we can encourage it. Now, whether the town will want to go as far as to add, you know, some sort of an incentive.
Not even that, not necessarily, but like many of us moved here in our sixties when we're in pretty decent health, but by the time we're in our eighties, we might, we think back, when I had my house built, should I have included da-da-da-da-da?
Well, now, let me tell you, 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 you say that and a lot of people don't think that the industry keeps up with what's going on currently, but I can tell you very few houses get built here today that if the elevator's not in them, they haven't already placed a shaft in it.
I understand, and those are the kinds of things, there are probably a lot of other things too, that would make it easier for people to remain in their houses as they age and as their health declines or whatever.
Right.
I just think maybe someplace if that were there, that it wouldn't be a requirement that you had to have it, but that it would be offered and people could be educated, like, this, you're really good right now with these seven flights of steps at your house, will you be this good when you're eighty-six? And so, you know, you may be.
Three foot wide doors.
Well, the market is, the market is such now that you can't compete unless you, listen, and it is such now that you cannot compete from island to island unless your houses are built so that they can accommodate just such things as you're talking about, most of these houses are being built, that's what I'm telling you. They're being built now to accommodate for aging, for an aging society or for someone who is looking for that when they come to the beach, when typically before they wouldn't find, they would find a house they couldn't get up and, and out of. But now they get there, not only do they, can they find a home, but the home is already prepared for them and all they have to do is add their. It's there, I'm just saying the market is, is with you already, but the idea that we, what we need to do is that, if we want to continue on that, we need to have something in the Cama land use plan that basically says that we are going to encourage that type of activity.
And promote.
And promote it.
Promote houses that would be, um, that.
So if you want to put that in the survey, yes.
You could put it on number three.
Yes, we could put it in number three, I'm not quite sure how to word it, other than, um, support for aging in place.
Age-friendly construction. Looking for age. You old people want someplace to live and go, somewhere along those lines.
Aging, do you, do you, I think, think white?
White's got it.
Well, just, um.
Age-friendly.
You know, to put, that the community, we would, we would promote, um, construction of, um, houses that would grow with, you know, with us as we age, as an age.
Age in place standards?
Is, how about age-friendly development?
Did you say age-friendly housing and facility?
Age-friendly development?
And then, and then if you want to put imprints, please, on your construction.
Like the whole island could be age-friendly, like restaurants and our ranches, everything.
Is age-friendly development, that should.
Age in place.
Yeah, age in place, yeah, age in place is a, is a big word right now.
So I can put in parentheses, ability to age in place after that.
I mean, I came here at fifty-one, I would like to, I, they want me to be buried in my backyard, but I might have to get buried at this church at the chapel in the new.
Coliseum.
Coliseum, whatever that is, okay, I don't know what one looks like, but I want.
You'll be dead for years before that gets built.
I got some time, I hope, but I'm saying, for, you know, when you come here, you know, I'm a trustee of the church.
Consider we're trying to raise money, you gonna have to explain that.
We're, we're not, we're not talking about the problem of all there, you're not your problem.
I'm sixty-six and my neighbors referred to us as the teenagers. And so the young whippersnappers here, and so, um, that tells me that there's a lot of people who are aging faster than I am on this island and I, so, so I know that we need, we need to be moving in that direction, our average age, I think, is seventy-one or whatever.
It's, it's less than that, but it's still high, we'll talk, we'll talk about that.
It's high, that's all I'm saying.
Greg helps to keep it alive.
Hmm, doing the best.
I love that.
Get your kids.
Actually, we've had quite, we've actually had quite a few families that moved in here that are.
That's great.
Yeah, forties, thirties, some thirties.
Okay.
All right, so number eight, we have added a, uh, choice for off-island resident of Brunswick County. And number nine, we've modified to if you own property, for how many years have you owned here?
Are we restricted to ten questions?
It would be my advice not to exceed it, given that the questions are so long, but, uh.
No, I just wondered if, um, if we were restricted that, um, just to ask them what their favorite thing about Holden Beach was.
What we could do is if number nine, number nine, I don't know, is, you know, if you want to switch that one out and just leave it open-ended, what's your favorite thing about Holden Beach unless someone objects to that?
Can we number ten?
No, no, do we care how long they've lived here?
I mean, does it really matter?
Yeah.
I don't think.
Yeah, they're probably not even gonna answer that.
I think, I, I.
Cause they don't think that how long they've been here is gonna be indicative as to whether or not you care about what they've answered.
Yeah, exactly, I, I agree.
So, what is your favorite thing about Holden Beach?
Yep.
And just leave it open.
Can we ask what's your favorite in your verse or whatever?
No, really, let's leave it positive.
You won't need, you won't need much of us.
There'll be, there'll be, there'll be plenty, uh, there'll be plenty of negatives that come out in number ten.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think the other, I think the other category is also very valid, valuable in a survey like this, because things that all of us in this group didn't think of, somebody's got finished, and all of us say, oh yeah, that would be really, really important if we just didn't happen to create it in this room.
Wes, that business owner, property owner, business owner, renter, that thing, is that, I think people understand what that means.
We can add, we can just leave it as business owner, if, the business owner is probably vested enough that we don't need to differentiate between them being a property owner and renter. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I didn't know what that meant anyway.
I think that's a.
That explained to me, so I was thinking that.
They checked two boxes.
Well, a business owner may not.
You can only check one.
Well, we just have such a little bit of commercial here.
There will be very few responses and, but, you know, if we get some of them to respond, you know, it's important for the community to know about.
I got the pink.
Especially if you want to eat my salad.
All right. One more question.
Yes, sir.
The area there on the causeway that you talked about something with J?
ETJ.
ETJ.
We don't have an ETJ.
I understand we don't have an ETJ, is there anything in the survey that should ask, should we, should we attempt to get the ETJ with the causeway?
If it, that would be something where I wouldn't want to add a specific question, but if we have some, and I suspect we'll get some comments, the corridor to the bridge looks like blah, 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 or whatever, and so we'll take those responses and perhaps there'll be a recommended action to pursue, you know, establishing an ETJ.
Somebody, I, I deliberately look at that introduction to beach communities as I go to other places, and I think, oh wow, this is the most, it just kind of invites you in and then you get to the bridge and then you see the ocean and it's pretty magnificent. You don't have that magnificent moment as you get to the top of our bridge, you know, the rest of it is like.
That, that takes care of it.
You know, I know it does, but that, but that introduction there is.
We have tried.
It used to be a lot worse.
Yeah, but.
I know you have.
And we were talking about this.
That is a, that is a really good comment to make in this room, but I wouldn't put that, that comment out there for public display. And, and the other thing is, is that the ETJ, there was an attempt to get an ETJ out there and the blowback was, uh, was astronomical.
I thought that was an annexation.
It was, but it was the same thing. You, you, and you're entitled to an ETJ, you have to get the county to give it to you, but then there's a tremendous amount of input and you also have to remember, when you get an ETJ, the, the planning board now has to have members from the ETJ on it. Huh?
One member.
Yeah.
It has to be a representative population, but.
That's right.
And there, in fact, there may not even be what, there may not even be a resident, you'd have to get, take some housing in there.
Right, so you would, you, you would, you would end up with some area over there, you can get up to one mile of the ETJ, you're entitled to it, but you have to get the county to, to basically sign off on the idea.
And you have to provide one service, right, like building inspector?
No.
No, not that service.
Actually, actually, um, for ETJ, you have to provide a minimum of four services in order to qualify to, to keep them in the ETJ just like you would if you annexed them. Yeah, one of them is the building, you have to provide the building inspectors, cause that's by law.
Will the ETJ pay taxes?
No.
No. And they don't go?
They're just under.
They fall under your land use, they fall under your land use, uh, under your land use only, because they don't have any say so in the regulatory.
Yeah.
I mean, even the cocoa palms look like crap.
But that, let's, let's, when we get to that point, we'll talk about it in the land use plan.
I can tell you, y'all don't pay me enough for an ETJ. I've had, I've had several towns with several of them, you don't pay me enough.
I thought we had one way back when ever.
A lot, a lot of communities have got, tried to get rid of theirs, um, but, uh, in any case, all right. Survey will be modified, uh, based on these results, I will send it to Tim, Tim will distribute it to you all. We're not gonna go through and start changing other things that we have not changed to date, but we will send it to you for confirmation that we have modified this. And if you guys have serious concerns, obviously let Tim know, if not, we're hopefully gonna get this thing up and running ASAP.
So, so can we finally, who are you sending it to? How are you gonna send it out to the community?
So it's gonna go out in a water bill?
Water bill.
And it's gonna be a link that they can.
Yeah, we're gonna send out notice that there will be a link that they can, they can get through.
In the water bill only.
Yeah.
Is that, is that what we want to do? Is that, is that what we want to do? Is that what the group wants to do?
Does the homeowners association get water bills?
Yes.
Does everyone who's a member of the PLA get a water bill?
If we sent, the ones we have an email address on, if we at least email them and say, here's the link.
We have another DL that could use that, also the homeowners association has another.
The beauty in the, the beauty in the water bill is, what, is if they don't live here, they'll get an opportunity to see that there's a survey. That's the beauty in the water bills. Everyone, that's the best way.
We all, we all agree that the water bill is fine. For them, and they wouldn't see all of that stuff?
That's fine, yeah.
So we all agree the water bill is good, that's definite. We definitely want to do the water bill, but the, but the question is, do we want to supplement it with the DL that we have for the property owners association? Which is emails.
My sense is that the property owners association can take that link and distribute it to its members if they want to.
Okay, that's another option. We can absolutely do that.
Doesn't have to be part of this committee.
Yep.
Does it make it accessible from the, from the Holden Beach site?
Well, yeah, and I, I can.
HB10hold.com.
Well, no, because, um, that's accessible then to anybody.
That's the one we don't want it to be.
But since off-island, we, I thought we fixed it when we said. We fixed that.
They're gonna sign a box and say, I'm an annual tourist or something.
Don't you want to know?
Yeah, I think it's important that, and the thing that I see in going to the website, they actually have to go to the website and see it, so they're interested anyway. Where, you know, so I, I think it's a good thing to get that input from those people. And in the survey, didn't we put something, uh?
Yes.
Will be valid unless they fill out one of those boxes.
And that's a mandatory question, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes. Yep, the ones with, uh, little asterisk box.
People get Tom to mention this on the survey.
Yeah, I do think we need to, at the property owners, make sure that we're sending out the DL. It doesn't matter, we just need to pass a thing that says, when it's ready, we send it out to your RDL on the property owners.
For those who have an email address.
Yeah, whatever DL you have. Distribute.
No, I just don't, I don't want to commit some mail in the, to the people.
Nope, 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 just emails, or whatever you have, you send your other service to.
Actually, the town's water bills.
Do you, I wish I knew it's common.
Yeah. So when you mail the town's water bill list, it's not a great one.
Lose views, Bob said lose views, why not?
Yeah, yeah.
He has over a thousand.
But the water bill list is not a great list, you actually have a lot of.
How long can we allow this survey?
We will see, we will, it will still be up and running next time we meet in October, it was assessed then.
Well, that's a good point. You need to, I think we should put in it to take it by this date, otherwise people won't do it. I mean, I. If I don't see a deadline, I'll just, oh yeah, I'll get to that, I'll get to that. It doesn't have to be real, but I think you should put it on it. It, you, you know, you, it doesn't have to be real.
We, I'll put a, in a, in this intro, please, please compete, complete the survey by September thirty.
Perfect.
And then you're going to email as interim or Tim will, you'll email the.
Tim will, um, and if you guys don't have any comments, just don't e- email him back, and if you do. Um, then just let him know and he'll get them to me. Do not reply all. And I will try to get that to him tomorrow, so he can get it out to you guys either on Friday or by the end of the week or on Monday or so. But we'll try to get that and go in as soon as possible. Alright, we, we're, uh, we're two hours in here, so we're gonna try to make this next section quick. It, it, a lot of this material, you will be able to digest further when you get your, your hard copies of the plan, okay? So, I'm gonna talk about some basic statistics, uh, for population growth. Uh, from nineteen eighty to two, twenty sixteen, you've added in total three hundred ninety-two folks. Now, your population has sort of waned a little bit over that time. I will say that it is difficult for demographers and census folks to capture data sometimes in the beach towns. So that may be an error, uh, the fact that our population in nineteen ninety was six forty-two. Two thousand, it was seven eighty-seven, and then back to two thousand ten, it was five seventy-five. So, you know, I, I, maybe that when they came around to, to collect results, folks weren't here for some reason, I'm not entirely sure. Yeah.
Well, I was here in two thousand ten and I assure you that I was not counted, neither my wife or ever Cam, we were both full-time residents. We were waiting, we were told to wait for the knock on the door, we waited, we were here most of the time. I think that it was totally mishandled in Holden Beach.
Okay, so.
They were knocked on my door, didn't they?
Okay, so, this is great. What we'll probably do is I will add a sentence in there that perhaps the census was not a full count or an acceptable count. To, to explain that, because I, I can't necessarily explain it. Um, but the other thing that, uh, I think they probably did a pretty good job of the county overall. It is astounding that the county added from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen, eighty-three thousand people.
Wow.
That equates to about five and a third folks a day. Or basically two new homes, because, uh, a lot of them are retirees with only two or so folks living in them a day, so that's astounding. The county, Brunswick County has now overtaken, um, our, uh, Wake County as, as the fastest growing. Tender right behind it, so that's a, uh, projection that we.
Leland.
Yes, a lot of Leland, but you've got a lot of stuff going on this way, a little bit closer to Myrtle Beach area as well. Um. In particular, yes, so, um, that is your permit resident population is six hundred thirty-three as of twenty sixteen. We use twenty sixteen because census data is only up to date to then. Um, we can't, we can't use twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen data, it takes them a while to, uh, catalog the data, alright? In terms of population growth, this is, uh, all of, one of the things that folks find interesting is. We have comparative data for all of the North Carolina coastal municipalities, this is hard to see, but. Um, it gives you a sense of what's going on in some of the other beach communities. Couple of things I want to point out. You see Sunset Beach there has a percent change of, you know, over a thousand percent. You have to understand that Sunset Beach has annexed like crazy over, over the years. That is not natural migration or growth. They have added substantially to their corporate limits, and that's what accounts for such, that, such a huge amount of growth. Um, your neighboring beach communities have a little bit more, uh, overall growth from nineteen ninety to twenty sixteen. Um, being Oak Island and Ocean Isle Beach. Oak Island again has also grown due to annexation. Um, so Ocean Isle is really a closer comparable community, because they, they, they have not expanded their corporate limits. They're still only on island, um, and they've grown over that same time by twenty percent. So, uh, Holden Beach has more or less remained stable, similar population since nineteen ninety. Uh, let's see, okay.
That nineteen percent is just a hundred and two people.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not substantial. You guys are neck and neck on population, they have six hundred thirty-nine, I think, so it's more or less the same in terms of year-round population. Population by age, this should come as, you know, no surprise to you guys, you guys have pointed this out. The, the bar in the red is Holden Beach, the bar in the green is Brunswick County for comparative purposes. We, we have in Holden Beach, like a lot of beach, beach towns, very few folks under the age of thirty-four. Uh, that's consistent a- across many of our coastal communities unless they're located near a large population center. Um, you know, Brunswick County has a lower than average millennial and Generation Z population. Uh, so, you know, Holden Beach in particular is very low. Your largest segment, uh, age cohort is the baby boomer population. Uh, aged fifty-five to seventy-four makes up over half of your permanent resident population age. Again, that probably comes as no surprise to you guys. Uh, and then your median age, of course, accordingly is much higher. Holden Beach is at sixty-one point four. The county overall is at fifty point nine, and then compared to North Carolina at thirty-eight point three. Um, North Carolina, Brunswick County, Holden Beach have been trending, uh, have, have been aging overall, so. Over the decades, we're adding a couple of years to that median age as we go. Now, just so you know, uh, uh, Sunset Beach, I believe, has a median age of sixty-six. Uh, Ocean Isle is a very similar median age to yours, though. Seasonal population, this is the data that we sort of have to come up with on our own, using our best available sets of data. Uh, this is an imperfect science at best, and this is all spelled out in a little bit more detail in your plan. We would estimate that your seasonal overnight population, minus your day trippers. You've got somewhere around sixteen thousand folks in here on, on a busy, uh, weekend or peak day. Uh, so that is a substantial increase compared to your, uh, permanent resident population. And I'm certain it feels like that, uh, you know, in those summer months, driving on, on, on town roads. And trying to go to a restaurant or what have you. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, twenty-seven or twenty-eight X your normal population. And it's possible it could be higher. This calculation, and, and we'll have time to review this next time we meet. Uh, assumes, on average, eight persons per seasonal recreational housing unit. Now, there's certainly some that have much more than that, but there's certainly some that have much fewer. So, we'll, uh, we'll talk about it and maybe we need to revise that number. We did call a couple of the real estate offices and just to, to gauge, um, that number, uh, but they felt like eight was a pretty good average.
We, we've worked that number, that number's actually been worked against though, what you just said, but it's also been worked against usage. Comparable usage, like water usage, between off-season and on-season, and you can use that as a comparison too. Cause typically people have the same habits, so that number has been worked, and it's been worked more than, more ways than that. But that number has been worked a few ways to come to that, I can tell you. That's not just a one-time shot in the dark, it's been, it's been. Uh, massaged many times to make sure it's, it's close.
The way that we've estimated, it's really hard to estimate day trip visitors, but generally. Your day trip visitors are gonna occupy your parking spaces. There are gonna be some residents that also occupy your parking spaces. But generally, we can estimate that those parking spaces will turn over anywhere from about one and a half times shift of parking. You've got two hundred twenty-five parking spaces, you figure folks are coming over here, usually that vehicle's gonna be full. So we'd estimate there's somewhere around thirteen hundred day trip visitors per day coming to the island. Combined with the, your seasonal overnight would put you somewhere close to, uh, eh, seventeen thousand five hundred. To between eighteen thousand folks a day. Now, this is on a busy day, this is like your July fourth, um, day. Some, you know, you can imagine anywhere between seventy-five to eighty-five percent of that number on a typical weekend, uh, in the summer. Um, population projections, uh, the Division of Coastal Management, uh, likes to use a calculation. Um, formula that uses the share of the municipality's overall county population to project out. State demographer does population projections for all of our counties. They do not do projections for municipalities. Um, so the Division of Coastal Management in the state, they like to use that county population. And then whatever your current percent of that overall county population is, project that out thirty years. Now, that's a little bit different for beach communities, because their population doesn't grow quite the same. However, over the last six years, you've added about ten or so residents a year. If you project that out thirty years. Your population would be somewhere around nine hundred and thirty-three. This projection for your share method is a little bit higher, at about a thousand ninety-five. Still not substantial. But you are starting to see a change in your housing occupancy. You're, you're starting to have an increase, relative increase, in the share of housing dedicated to permanent residents. So, we would imagine further conversion of that will, will result in a number that's somewhat similar to that thirty years out. Now, as I stated before, going any more than twenty is, you know, just to take it with a grain of salt. It'd be great, you know, if someone, if twenty forty-six, we looked and there was a thousand residents by then, but there's no way really to know. Housing tenure, um. One of the things that we like to look at is, you know, your occupied versus vacant housing. In beach communities, this is very different than a inland community. An inland community does not want to have a substantial amount of vacant housing, because that would insinuate that they have some serious dilapidated housing issues. However, in beach communities, by and large, the, 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 the large percentage are in fact vacant and used for seasonal purposes. As is the case here in Holden Beach.
There are some federal reports that, that you can look at that actually show, um, Holden Beach as being poor. And high crime areas because of the percentage of vacant housing that we have. And I, it seems like they would find a way to, to put that in there, but when I looked at a study one time, it, it showed us. As having all of this vacant housing and made it a high crime, it was listed, we were listed as a high crime area because of the housing vacancies.
Yeah.
That's just a crazy way to look at it. Yeah.
Yeah.
A barking dog is our big crime last night.
Um, so, you're, you're at somewhere around twenty percent of your units are occupied year-round. Ocean Bo, Ocean Isle Beach for comparison is at ten percent, so you have more overall percentage of, of permanent residents than does. Yeah, absolutely, and all this material will be given to you today.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, and, and I'm really just touching on this quickly, just, you know, if you have questions, let me know. You will be able to digest it more fully once you receive the material.
Comes out? It, this has the source?
Yes, yep, um, and this is from US Census Bureau or American Community Survey, however you want to, uh, term it.
Cause I'm sorry, twenty percent, that's so off. In the winter, no way.
Yeah, I don't know, um, it, it may be wrong, you know, just as.
Off by, there's, there's a zero in there that shouldn't be here, because there's like, nobody's here.
Yeah.
At least around me, there's.
Yeah, it, it. It's a big island, though.
Yeah, it's not really.
Well, you still have the six hundred permanent residences.
Six hundred residents.
Yeah, six hundred houses, and then how many people are?
It's about.
Men, women, and children.
They're saying there is four hundred and ninety-four occupied year-round housing units.
And there's six hundred people in those.
Yes.
Six hundred thirty-three.
Yep.
That seems right, that seems right, though.
It seems like. So they just don't live around you, they live everywhere else.
Yeah.
No, I think that is right.
I live in a neighborhood, all my neighbors are here all the time.
Almost all of my streets are here all the time, too.
A lot of people travel.
In my, my street, yes.
We're still.
I still, when I live in South Carolina, there was no soul there, and here on OBW.
Give up my citizenship.
The zombie wave could come and there would be no one here, so. It's creepy.
We're on that strip too.
Okay, you know what I'm talking about.
Um.
Hope people don't go by from now on.
Come down to East End. We're a neighborhood.
So, for. Yeah. That's alright. No, no, that's okay. I didn't create the data, so. The, the. I've had them all before, you know.
No, you've not had them all yet.
Are we tape recording this? Think it's a great first.
For comparison, North Carolina has overall eighty-five percent of its housing units occupied year-round, so you guys are basically flipped in that.
It's, 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 it's fine. I've got all those back there, I'm gonna miss one.
Okay.
Uh, just a couple more slides, uh, median value of owner-occupied housing, this shows all the beach communities. I know it's hard to see here, but it'll be given to you again. You guys ranked six highest of, uh, of all the beach communities. Um, the highest being Wrightsville Beach, um, followed by Baldhead Island. Um, so you guys are in the higher, uh, area in terms of median occupied housing. Your neighbors, Ocean Isle, uh, is slightly above at four hundred ninety-seven thousand. Um, and then Oak Island is much lower at two hundred fifty-five.
Is there a reason that figure eight's not in there?
Figure eight is in unincorporated New Henover, Canada, but yes, they would be the highest if you took just that island.
And I, I would assume that Sunset and the rest of them are low, because they have those, they have, they have mainland properties that.
That, that's correct.
That are upper-end structures.
Yep. Um, alright. Alright, building activity has slowly increased over the last ten years. Um, substantially since two thousand fifteen, and this, these are all new construction permits, all for single-family units. Um, and so, you're, you're seeing a. And so, you're, you're seeing a serious trend, um, upwards. What we have seen in a lot of communities is, is it gradual level, leveling off. It'll be interesting, interesting to see what two thousand and eighteen will result in, in a similar number. I don't know where we are right now.
Let me tell you, it's gonna be zero, if we don't change something soon, it's gonna be zero. Seriously, it's gonna be three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's not fiscal year, this is calendar year, isn't it?
Yes, calendar.
So you would have had the first six months of.
Yeah.
So you know how much you, you had permits issues.
That would be happening. It should pick up if we.
After, after Thursday?
And then, this is, you'll get this, this, I, folks find very interesting. This is a compilation of all this comparative data and then rank, you know, Holden Beach where they stand. Median age, seventh highest, percent of occupied housing, sixth lowest. Percent in labor force, labor force fifth lowest. Household income, sixth highest, median family income, seventh highest per capita, sixth highest. Percent total housing in one unit detached, third highest, so you have a substantial number of your homes are all single-family. And then median value of owner, owner occupied housing, again, sixth hi- highest.
So beach is some single family.
Um, I don't recall.
I'll, I'll read it, I will get it. That's good data for me.
Okay. It's Southern Shores looks like is highest.
Where's Southern Shore?
But that's in Outer Banks area. Um, and then maybe Topsail Beach, I'm not sure, but, uh, it's hard to see.
Topsail Beach, I, I would assume got a lot of residential because of perfect friend.
Wiped out.
Well, and they're still on septic.
Yeah, and no, on septic, that's right.
Septic will keep it down.
Yep, they like it that way.
Tim, when we're looking at this land use plan, do we include in here somewhere the fact there's only so many buildable lots?
Yes, that'll be in there. Yeah, it's in the old one, it'll be in this one too.
Um, so, that's just a quick run-through of some of the little highlights of the community statistics, just to give you a sense of what your, the material that you'll receive. Any questions? All right. Next meeting will be October twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and I'll grab your books here. Your goal, and I trust that you all will do this, is to review this material and be prepared to talk about it.
We'll have to get our copy. Now, there's eleven in here.
About ten of us.
Really, I can't count. There is thirteen, that's right.
Please.
Thirteen, you're right. I counted them before, Tom, I came up with ten. Left that paper every time.
It's the same as the website.
I kept myself, I kept myself, I keep getting left out. But you don't get one because I counted me.
Bring these with you to the meetings, I will bring the new chapters, um, each meet, each time we meet. So, hold on to these.
So our binder will get thicker and thicker?
Yes.
As we go along.
All right, does everyone have got one more?
Two more over here. Oh, you got one?
I've got one.
Thank you.
That's it, there's my contact information, however, please direct correspondence through Tim unless there's a, an emergency of some sort. And I will see you all, um, in October at two P M.
Yep, um, can we get copies of your slides?
Yes, I'll email those to Tim.
We already have those.
Oh yeah, you already have them, yeah.
Well, that's why they're up there, we have them.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you weren't taking copies while you were looking at them?
I was trying to.
I'll get you, I'll, I'll, I can forward this right to you.
Well, thanks.
Or there's.
No, I'm gonna send it to her, okay?
Okay.
Just send it to her.
And I would.
Or there's.
How far is it?
I was gonna let her send it all to you.
Yes, there's more material in there, I only pulled up.
No, what I mean is, is there stuff on the slides that's not in?
No, there's one table that has a column that's different.
I wanted your slide from earlier too, though.
From today?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
It's all in there.
Yeah, Tim will give it to you.
It's all in there.
So, um, but, that would be good.
These are the slides.
Well, I mean, it's, it's with the narrative, but they're, they're a little bit different, so.
You want the first one? I don't really want to get.
Yeah.
And.
I got the email, we put that up there, I have it.
Okay, thank you.
I have it on there.
Okay.
The only thing I'd like to add is if there are, um, questions that you feel like that I need to research in advance of this, in advance of our next meeting, please send them to Tim, no later than October fifteenth, so that he can send them to me. If not, that's fine, we'll go page by page through this document. But if you think there's things that I need to, I need a little bit of background on, then please send them to him by October fifteenth.
Tim, did you speak with us about care and capacity?
No. I didn't.
Tim was gonna speak with you about care and capacity.
Inter.
About what?
Care and capacity of our, um, water and sewer systems, that it's a current issue in our town and a real hot issue. And it would be, maybe we could address some of those issues sooner rather than later, might be helpful for a lot of people.
Chapter four, we talk about capacity, um, and allocated capacity through the county. But, it's at some, I, I don't know what.
We, we got a full engineer's report on that, I mean, we got, we literally just paid for an engineering company to do a full report on that. Uh, where that's gonna go, Vicky, I don't know, but before I brought it up to him, because some of the information he's gonna get, he's gonna get from us.
Yes.
We're not getting information from him.
Okay, then I, I, I'm gonna leave that to you, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, that's why I didn't bring it up to him, was I, I understood what you were asking me, and then when I said, yeah, we're gonna deal with it, but I thought we were talking about it in a different context, but the way you're talking about it is, is it, it's a lot of stuff he gets is gonna be getting from us. And we'll be getting it from the county, but we already have ninety-nine percent of those numbers. If you've got specific questions, we can, we can produce those numbers, uh, especially for care and capacity and that kind of stuff.
As far as me personally, as far as I'm concerned, not my monkeys and not my circus, so, um, that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, and if you don't, if you don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to ride, ride your, uh, your circus train too. I don't want it to be my monkeys.
Before we do anything else, Dwight had something he wanted to discuss.
You know, in my other life, when I'm not doing egg-friendly stuff, I'm an environmentalist, and so I am the, on the board at Brunswick Environmental Action Team. And so, on October, I want to invite you to this meeting on October the fourth, there's gonna be a meeting at Seaside United Methodist Church in Calabash. And a couple of PhD people in biology and environmental science and things like that are doing this, uh, program for us called What is a Barrier Island? And they're gonna talk about dredging in Estorene Creek, they're gonna talk about, um, primary nursery areas and some of those. And I saw a lot of those kinds of things listed in our previous plan. And so, if some of you are like me and know very little about some of those things, uh, living on a barrier island, we assume that we know a lot of stuff. We don't know a lot of stuff about marshes and wetlands and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, a couple of these guys are gonna do a pretty neat presentation for us. It, they're right now in Sunset Beach, they're having a big problem, they're gonna, they're trying to dredge Jinx Creek, which is a, a virgin Estorene Creek or something, which is a primary nursery area, and so I've learned a lot more about it than I used to know. But, uh, I think it, it might, I'm just gonna ask Wes, would it be valuable for us to have some of that information as we go through this process?
Yes, you will, if you want, there will be, now, the dredging issue and the delineation of the primary nursery area and all of that, that is beyond, that is getting into the realms of politics and the elected officials over there about the dredging thing, but.
This is not gonna be about that, this is gonna be about.
The classification.
Understanding all of these areas and what they mean and that kind of.
That's right, so, we will show on maps, the available data that shows what a primary nursery area and things, and we'll have a descriptor of them. And so, I will also be available when, when you get that material and answering those questions. But as a precursor, and certainly those folks are probably more knowledgeable about the various specifics than I am, then it probably would be helpful if you wanted to attempt.
Okay, so it's October the fourth, I think it's at six o'clock, but it might be at six, but I won't get Vicky to, I'll tell Vicky the exact time, I just couldn't find my email. And it's, you know, what is a barrier island and all of the things that are, that go along with being a barrier island, I, I think it might be valuable for.
Where was that?
It's at Seaside United Methodist Church in Calabash. And if you don't have that background, you know, I know so little about what all this means, you know, I didn't know what, they talked about P and A one day, and I'm like, wow, P and A.
Yeah. There's a lot, yes, there's, and you'll get, when you get chapter three, your next chapter, there'll be more acronyms than you want to know about.
As long as timely, and that, that's why I invited you all to come.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Because you're gonna afford me that information.
However.
Are you gonna send it to us?
I think you'll send it.
Um, do you already have any other announcements? Okay, next P and D meeting will be September twenty-fifth. Um, do we want to keep our regular P and D meeting for four o'clock, or do you want to move?
Yeah, I think.
Just move our, okay. So then we'll keep that one at four o'clock. Okay, unless there's anything else, um, I do entertain the motion to adjourn.
Does your agenda have asking for any comments from the public?
Well, yeah.
Number seven.
Are there any comments, guys?
We're getting tired.
Do you have any comments, others are getting tired? Okay, now do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. If everybody, uh, is in favor, then we will be adjourned for this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.